All right, we're gonna get started this evening. I'd like to bring the City Council meeting on Monday, October 13th. Real call please.
Vice Mayor DeRocic.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Let the record show that Mayor Viera and Councilmember Lane are excused.
All right, we're gonna do the invocation by Billy Bob Murhead, Public Safety Chaplain, and if you can still stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would bow your heads with me. Gracious and heavenly Father, we just thank you for a day like today that we can come here and take part in the actions of our city. And we just ask that you be with us now, Father, that the decisions would be to the benefit of your will, your will for the City of Series and its citizens. And we thank you for these that are present tonight. We just ask that you be with us and that you guide us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we have two presentations. The first one would be the presentation of the Friends of the Turlock Animal Shelter. Mr. Nichols.
Honorable counsel, back in January of 2014, we had a local resident, actually her husband, Sheila Fox, her husband used to be a volunteer fireman for us, and she was on Facebook and noticed that the Friends of the Turlock Animal Shelter were looking for someplace to donate an animal resuscitator to. She contacted us and asked if we had one, if we would be interested in it, and we said we did not, but we would definitely be interested in one. Well, little would we know that on August 27th of this year, the Series Fire Department responded to River Road for a reported house on fire. Upon arrival, they encountered the front of the residence on fire with the occupant frantically asking them to rescue his four dogs that were still inside the residence. The firefighters had performed an initial search of the residence and reported near zero visibility, and the house was clear of any persons. A secondary search was conducted, and it came back clear for humans also. After the fire was extinguished and most of the smoke had cleared from the residence, a thorough search of the house was initiated to search for the dogs. All four dogs were located in a back bedroom, and had buried themselves under a blanket that was under the occupant's bed. Four dogs were removed from the house and assessed. One dog was not breathing and pronounced deceased. The other three were barely breathing, suffering from smoke inhalation, and appeared to be in respiratory distress. One of the three was barely breathing at all. A firefighter retrieved the animal rescue unit from the battalion cheese vehicle and began administering oxygen to all three dogs at the same time. After approximately 30 minutes of care, two of the dogs began walking around and breathing normally. The third one, which was the one only barely breathing on his own, needed an additional 45 minutes of oxygen treatment from the resuscitator, then began acting normal also. It was interesting that, as noted by the firefighters who treat the dogs, it seemed as if the dogs knew that the device was placed over their mouths to help them. They purposely tried to get closer to make sure it didn't fall off. They said they kept scooging up closer to it. The masks fit great, they were easy to use, our guys said, and definitely helped to save the lives of the three dogs. I have two members from the Friends of the Turlock Animal Shelter, Lee and John, if you guys are here, and then Sheila Fox and Doug, if you guys could come up. Got a certificate here for you guys. It says Certificate of Recognition honoring Friends of the Turlock Animal Shelter in recognition of your dedication to animal rescue in Stanislaus County and in appreciation of the recent donation of two pet resuscitators to the Series Fire Department, presented on this 13th day of October 2014. Very much. Can you briefly tell what you guys do?
My name's John Pinkerton, this is my wife, Leann. We started out in rescue, or she did, as a volunteer, and somehow I got involved. And I've been in command of Friends of Turlock Animal Shelter. We're a 501(c)(3) in Turlock since 2000, and I have taken them to new heights. We're probably the most financially stable, best-run rescue organization in Stanislaus County, and I'm not bragging, I mean that sincerely. We actually accomplish what we set out to do. And we started with these pet resuscitators just as a means of giving back where it's needed. And Series, I think, was the fifth recipient, and I believe, I just got a request from Deneer Fire Department. And basically, that's it. I just enjoy what I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Second one's not a presentation, but we want to recognize that this declaring October 2014 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we have a thing that we're gonna send out, So approval of minutes of the regular meeting on September 8th, September 22nd, 2014, all were present?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's 302. Citizens Communication. All matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. I have two cards here. The first one will be Renee Ledbetter.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Counsel. Renee Ledbetter, President of the Series Chamber of Commerce. You have in your hands some information that we passed out to you and that we're advertising right now. We have some upcoming events. This Friday, we do have our Before Business Coffee Hour, which will be held at the Twalome River Lodge from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, and we are gonna be talking about the expansion of the ACE commuter train, which is being proposed to expand from Manteca all the way to Turlock during a five-year plan. And so, we do have representatives coming in to talk about this expansion and what it could do for our community. So we encourage everyone to attend this event, it's free. We do ask that you register online on the Series Chamber website. I've left a couple of these flyers at the front door, so if anyone from the community would like to take them, we encourage you to do so, or you could find the information on the Chamber website. We also have, on Tuesday, October 21st, we've teamed up with the Series Fire Department. This is our second annual barbecue for breast cancer, and it's a drive-through. You could purchase your meals ahead of time and just drive through and pick them up. You can buy your tickets online, or you can purchase them through the Series Chamber or through our exit realty consultant's office over on Mitchell Road. There is a small convenience fee if you buy them online, I think it's like $1.24, it's on the flyer. So if you need more information, again, I refer you back to the website on that. And then, we're very excited to announce that we're gonna start ticket sales on our first annual Series Public Safety Black Tie Charity Ball, which will be held March 7th, 2015. We are expected that this event will sell out very quickly, so we encourage you to get your tickets as soon as possible, once they go on sale. The event will feature Senator Anthony Canela as a keynote speaker, as well as Sheriff Adam Christensen, and then our keynote speaker for the night is also going to be George Piero, who is the FBI Special Agent that captured Saddam Hussein. And all three gentlemen came through the Series Police and Fire Departments, either as volunteers or as actual officers. So we're very excited to see these gentlemen start here and then move on to greater things. And so, as I said, we expect that this event is gonna sell out very, very quickly. We only have a certain number of tickets that we'll be selling because it'll be held here in the community center, and we will be transforming this room into a memorabilia hall with photos and different pieces of memorabilia. It's a tribute to public safety yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And the benefit of, the fundraising benefit of this event will go back to support the Police and Fire Department Explorer Programs. So we're very excited to be hosting this event with the city. Do you have any questions?
Black Tie Charity Ball.
Yes.
Ticket price?
The tickets are going to be $50 per person, or $3.75 for a table of eight, and then the ticket prices will go up January 15th by $25, and that's if we still have tickets by then. So we're hopefully going to be selling out before then. And all of this is on the website as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Next card, Monica Ventura.
Good evening, Counsel. Well, I just wanna start off by saying that I grew up here in Series, and, you know, lately there's been a lot of racism and a lot of things that have been coming up about injustices that have been happening in this city by city employees. And now with the NAACP, unfortunately with the last situation, whenever we receive a phone call now, we don't have, we can't ignore these calls anymore after the last ones proved to be true, and through more phone calls that we're receiving, we're being told that there are racist emails being sent by city employees, and we have researched this, and we have copies, and we have found posts on Facebook by city employees with sexual innuendos to other employees. It's devastating to hear that, and I really thought that things were gonna calm down after the last incidents happened, but I see that it can't be fixed with the work that's been putting into these investigations because it is stated that the city has a very small IT staff, and that they're unable to devote more than four man-hours per week to search requests, or to search what's happening. Now with this little amount of time, it makes me wonder, is every investigation that the city does on itself, is this how much time that's devoted to all of them? I don't know if that makes sense. Is that much time being devoted to all of these cases for investigation? If that's the case, as John Mataka stated at the last council meeting, I really want there to be a third-party investigation on everything that's happening. I feel like that's the only way that the city can solve its issues because investigating yourself, as stated, it's a small IT staff, you don't have enough manpower, and we really need to work through this because I don't wanna see the city fall apart. Like I said, I grew up here, I went to elementary school here. I really have my heart here, and I just don't want to see any more of this happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Leonard Shepard, 2841 Fowler Road, number 71. Well, I thought winter was going to be here, or fall, or something, but I guess not, some still wearing short pants, but we're having the time come now when people are gonna be turning on their heaters and so forth, and especially old ones like the one I have at my house. And I'm just urging people to call their local whoever they have, takes care of their air conditioner and heater, and have their heating system checked out because you don't wanna buy a new one when it's 10 degrees above. You wanna do it now and get it over with before it gets really bad. But that's, also, I would like to say that, you know, this city is a lot, well, it's like any other, but I just saw something on the news. I hope Mayor Viera is okay because the City of Bell, the mayor, got shot by his wife. But we don't have the problems that those people down in Southern California have. That city is so sad. We're sitting on the top of the world compared to them, and our City Council, I know you're being hit pretty hard about things, but you're still doing a pretty darn good job, as far as I can tell, trying to keep this city afloat, and I think you need to be commended on that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard.
When we came up before council about cameras, we were told that our allegations weren't true. We were told that we need to get our facts straight. Well, the N-word and all these other negative words that are flying around on social media, they're true. Now, you can come and tell me, or tell the media, that they're not true, no problem. And we'll prove it. We will bring witnesses forward and verify some of the racist remarks that have been made by this city. The other issue is, if you cannot investigate and have a problem investigating, then maybe the NAACP can get an oversight committee and get them involved. If not, then the grand jury will get involved, because there's definitely enough to take to the grand jury and open an investigation into this city. They have investigators, they can help you, but all of this is going to stop. It's going to stop. Enough is enough. When it's to the point where the president of the NAACP has been disrespected in every way, shape, and form, the organization has been basically ostracized out of the city, questioned, why do we even have a relationship with the NAACP? And I said it six months ago, racism existed then, and documented proof has surfaced with witnesses that it exists now. And we will move further. Thank you.
All right, so approval of agenda as posted or amended, a certification of posting? One second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 302. Appointments to board and commission, there's none. Would anybody like to declare a conflict of interest?
No.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is required, that particular item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately. Cindy.
Item one, general correspondence information only. Item one A, vice program update. Item one B, Recreation Division Monthly Report for August 2014. Item two, Register of Audited Demands for Period Covering September 17th through October 1st, 2014. Item three, Resolution Number 2014-125, amending the Conflict of Interest Code to Reflect Changes in the Organization and Title Changes. Item four, Resolution Number 2014-126, Approving the Stanislaus County Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Allocation Agreement with Stanislaus County to Receive CDBG Funds for Fiscal Year 2014-15. Item five, Resolution Number 2014-127, Approving Upgrading One Water Distribution Operator One-Two Position to a Senior Water Distribution Operator. Item six, Resolution Number 2014-128, Supporting Renewal of the Stanislaus County Recycling Market Development Zone, RMDZ. Number seven, Resolution Number 2014-129, Authorizing Destruction of Certain Public Safety Personnel Records. Item eight, Resolution Number 2014-130, Authorizing the Removal of the Freeze of Employee Step Increases.
All right, would any council member like to pull an item?
One A and six.
One A and six. Anybody in the audience? All right. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept items one, one B, two, three, four, five, seven, and eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 302. All right, how about one A?
One A, I just pulled so we could get the update from Brian.
Thank you, Counsel. We've conducted interviews. We have two people that are gonna begin in our Volunteers in Code Enforcement Program. Their training is initially gonna, they're both very qualified. They are both very retired individuals that do have time to donate to our program. One of them actually has 32 years in management at a local, large store. The other one comes from an HR background, excuse me, and working in the private industry, so we'll have a good balance. One has excellent computer skills, and is very interested in doing the things that we need done inside, and the other one has excellent customer relations and is very willing to do the things that we need done on the outside. So we actually have a perfect match for, to get the program started. They're both gonna begin by writing out with our code enforcement supervisor to get a handle on, kind of a feel on what he does, and what we look for, and things like that, and then they will both come back inside and be working on the computers, getting up to speed on how that works, and then they'll kinda do their separate things. As far as time in the building, we've not actually established that yet. We're gonna give them a chance to kinda get their feet wet and then kinda set some guidelines to go from there. We're hoping for at least a minimum of anywhere from four to 12 hours a week from each one of them. Any questions?
Are we gonna do any more than two at any point in time?
We're hoping to. We kinda had the slim pickings on our applications. We're hoping once this gets established that we'll have some track record, that we'll be able to put it back out there again and have some other people apply.
Are they going to focus on anything in particular, or just be out there looking for everything?
Well, what we're gonna have them do initially is do some of the checkups on the things that we already have open cases on currently, so we can get those closed. We're averaging about 100 to 125 new cases a month, so we're dragging some of last month's cases over to this month. We have about 250 to 300 open cases any given month. If we can get them out there kinda doing the double checks on some of those, just to make sure that they've been taken care of, that'll be a large start where we can get back to business and be more proactive than reactive.
Well, one of the things I noticed this weekend is, we have a new store that opened on Hatch Road, which I think is great for the tax base, but they must have had, I don't know, 14 signs up and down Hatch Road, and it's very bright, and it looks so terrific to drive down Mitchell, I mean, yeah, Mitchell, because we really got all of that cleaned up. Now we have this one store that has opened, and it looks horrible. Then I noticed around the corner, there's another business that's putting their sign out, and I'm just afraid it's going to just take off again. And like I said, Mitchell Road has just really done great.
Frank was actually going to that first new store today, this afternoon, to have those removed. They do have a permit, I believe, from planning for the banners, for their little grand opening process here for 30 days, but the other ones aren't allowed there. He was going there this afternoon to have them removed.
Well, when I saw that, it made me wonder, and I don't know if Tom can answer this, but when staff signs off on a business license, is it easy when they come in just to hand them, like, I know that there's copies that are already made about maybe temporary signs, and that maybe will keep some of this from happening? I don't know if that's possible or not. And I know that they mail, they mail them in too, but then if they mail back the business license, isn't there just the one-page temporary signs or something, and it could say, this is not all-inclusive, but this is just, you know, that we really want to keep the temporary signs, you know, the way it should be?
Right now, that's kind of embodied in the section that we hand out, it's the entire sign code, but we could certainly update that to have just a one-page sheet that was specific to the temporary signs, and it would be easy enough to hand out with the issuance of a business license.
Well, then I think we just look a lot more business-friendly, instead of they go out there, they open, and they put all these signs out, and then they're getting a knock on the door, and maybe we can stop some of that.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Unfinished business, none. Public hearing.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Whoa, whoa, I have to...
One A, we got it?
That's right, my bad. All right, one A, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept one A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Now, number six.
302. Number six.
And I just have a couple clarification questions, and Toby, you'll be answering The low-interest loans and other assistance with financing, are those loans provided by CalRecycle?
Yeah, and the county administers those. We don't administer any of those.
And then as far as cost to the city, is there any cost to the city at all?
There's no cost to the city.
I move to accept consent calendar item number six.
I think we have to...
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Anybody in the audience? All right.
I still move to accept it.
All right.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, now, unfinished business, none. Public hearing, number nine. I read this right, Cindy? Or do you read this? I'll let you read it. Thank you.
Item nine, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance Number 2014-1021, A Proposed Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment 14-07ZOTA for the Modification of Code Section 18.42.100, Definitions of the City of Series Sign Ordinance Regarding Sign Area Calculations and Adding an Architectural Feature Definition.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. This is a little bit of a follow-up from the August 25th City Council meeting where the variance appeal from WSS, the shoe store, was before the City Council. The direction that was provided at the council meeting on that action was to deny the planning commission, or uphold the planning commission denial of that project, but also to kinda go back and look at the way the definitions read in terms of the calculation of sign area. So the way that it was formally done is if I have a box, kind of a rectangular-shaped box, and it's two feet by 10 feet in length, then that's a 20-square-foot sign, irrespective of the type of text or lettering that's included in the box. And so, the direction that was provided was that if there's individual channel letters, so each letter would be its own, using that as the calculation and not kind of a box around it. And so, staff augmented the definition of sign area in the code, and we've also included the term architectural element definition. That was taken to the planning commission at their meeting on September 15th. They approved that by a 4-0 recommendation, they didn't make any changes. And the reason that we could get this back fairly quickly is because we were just modifying two of the definitions, nothing else in the code changes. The sign area, as I mentioned, it talks about the individual letters or logos, and so, when the sign makers come in, they can give us the square footage of a logo or the letters, and we can kinda add those up fairly easily, and then now that becomes the square footage requirement. What I mean by that is, for attached signage for a business, if I have 30... I have 30 linear feet of frontage, I can get one square foot signage. So that would now be the measurement. It's the way that we're calculating how their signs and their logos add up to that 30 square feet. That's what's changing with this amendment. And so I'm going to read the sign area definition. And it suggests that the entire face of a sign, including the surface and any framing projections or molding, but not including the support structure, where a sign consists of individual letters or an individual logo symbol that is attached or painted on the wall of a building or structure where there is no distinguishable frame or border, the combined square footage of each individual letter or individual logo slash symbol will be considered the sign area. If the calculations of individual letters or logo symbols cannot be determined, then dimensions around each letter or logo symbol may be used to determine the sign area. So that's kind of how the definition changed for sign area. So we went from the old box style. I took the height and the length and multiplied those together regardless of what was included in that box. That would come up with your sign area. So now we're saying that you can use the individual letters or symbols that way. If there are, there are some locations within town, there's quite a few actually that have an old cabinet-style sign where it's kind of a rectangular box and they just change the plastic in and out. They wouldn't necessarily get the benefit of the change unless they took that cabinet off the wall and put up individual letters, which is, you know, up to the business owner or the property owner. The other element that was, that was added to the definitions, and we didn't have one before, talked about an architectural feature. So sometimes these signs, elements of the buildings, the way they're designed, we were including those elements as part of the sign area. And so what we did is we wanted to kind of distinguish between the two. So we added a definition that talks about architectural feature. And it's the following, it says, "An element that appears to be part of the designed sign area but is actually physically integrated into the building's design, its stone, stucco, wood, or other building material, and is not utilized as part of the calculating the sign area." So that's what we did for the architectural element. Both of those definitions kind of mimic the direction that was provided for the WWS or WSS shoe store. And so they are going to be doing a facade improvement shortly where they will have an architectural element and then they'll have the kind of the new way of the calculations of the sign. And so with this, we think that one, this modernizes our sign code a little bit, encourages folks that maybe have a cabinet sign that they've had for 10 or 15 years and they want to kind of explore their options to maybe add some, an updated style of attached signage, they will get the benefit of this. So the WSS kind of kicked that off, but it's not unique to them. Every, every new business will have the advantage of doing that. And the existing businesses, when they decide to upgrade their signage, would have the advantage as well. So at this point in time, I would answer any questions that you may have.
I have no questions, but I thank staff for the way they worked on this and put this together. And especially thank them for reaching out to DeeDee's Discount and explaining, you know, the situation we went through. And, and, you know, I think that shows us we're going in the right direction.
Is there a cost factor if somebody wanted to do one of those cabinet signs? Is there a fee?
The sign approval process is free. So, but them, actually, if they were taking an old cabinet style off, taking that off and putting in individual channel letters, there's going to be a cost to fabricate that sign. And then there's going to be a building permit cost to actually fix it to the building.
All right. Anybody in the audience? Okay, fine. We'll bring it back to council.
Yes, Mr.?
Not yet.
You do need to formally open the public hearing, I think you did, to the public. And, and then if there's no comments, to close it. And then, then, then we would bring it back for, first, a motion that the ordinance be read by title and number only. And secondly, a motion to approve the ordinance for introduction and first reading.
Okay, so we have it closed. Now we're going to bring it back.
I move to have the, this ordinance be read by title and number only.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes 302.
The clerk will now formally read the ordinance by title and number.
Ordinance number 2014-1021, a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment 14-07ZOTA for the modification of code section 18.42.100 definitions of the City of Series sign ordinance regarding sign area calculations and adding an architectural feature definition.
I move to approve ordinance number 2014-1021 for introduction and first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 302. Now we have a second reading that we're going to do?
That will come back. The law requires that we can't pass it without, without at least five days intervening between introduction and first reading. So staff will bring this back for final adoption at the next council meeting.
Okay. Councilmember referrals. Any councilmember like to refer?
No.
Reports. I have nothing to report.
I have nothing.
Ms. Klein?
Nothing to report, but what happened to item number 10?
I have an item number 10.
I don't have an item 10.
I do. It's, it's Nessa State in here from the last one? Okay.
All right, Mr. Wells?
Just a couple of quick items. Last week, we had the two-plus-two-plus-two meeting with the school district. And happy to report that was a very positive meeting. I just wanted to trump the positive relationship we have with our school district. And what we hope to at the next joint meeting on November 20th will be an opportunity for the school district to increase their funding for our school resource officers, which is a very positive thing for our community. So that's something that's very exciting to know the school district is willing to continue the relationship that we have together and increase that funding. And that's, that's something that's very exciting. So we look forward to that. Tom mentioned, and he actually took this evening on the WSS, myself, Tom, Renee Ledbetter, other members of our staff, met with the, kind of the advance team of WSS this week as they're beginning their marketing kind of outreach to the community. And it was a very refreshing meeting to see, you know, kind of their extension and their willingness to be a real, true partner within our community and their ability to be, you know, they really see this as a neighborhood-type store. So it was encouraging, you know, we had a little rough start to our relationship with them, but, you know, they really did do a good job of coming in and, you know, kind of putting that stuff behind them and looking forward to them moving forward in our community. And we look forward to them being a very successful and a positive influence in our, in our community. The other thing I had to trump, our finance department, and Sheila would never do this, so I have to give her praise. She's only got this, this meeting and one more before she's officially retired. But on Friday, the auditors completed their audit. And again, our finance department, led by Sheila, just does a fantastic job. And the results from that audit were just outstanding. And she deserves a tremendous amount of credit for that. So I need to give her that praise because she more than earns it. And lastly, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Ventura left, but I did want to take the opportunity to clarify two things that they said. I don't normally like to do this, but I think it's very important in this case. They mentioned the allegations of racism, and I want to stress how important and how serious that we take any of these allegations. And in a meeting on 9/24, we met myself, councilmember Rhino, councilmember Lane. Another staff met with Mr. Johnson and asked for him to give us any evidence of that, and he has not done so. So it's impossible for us to investigate things that we don't give any information to. And the response, and her reference to the four-hours dedication is in response to a public records request that we received, not from the NAACP. I provided you the response to that public records request, was from another journalist from Southern California who gave us a very long public records request of 14 terms that he wanted searched in every possible city directory. And our response to that, and under the state law in terms of what was response, is what we have to determine whether that's a reasonable request and how much time it would take to respond to that request. So her reference is in our response to that public records request, was a very random list of 14 specific terms that we responded. And the correspondent reduced that public records request, and we are working to respond to his items. But again, the law does not require us to dedicate all of our time and staff to a public records request. We have to be reasonable in our response, and we feel that we are being reasonable in that response. The NAACP in this particular, this evening, combined those two issues in terms of how we investigate to how we respond to a public records request. And those are two very distinct and different cases. So I want to make sure that our citizens and our, and you, council, have that full information of exactly what's going on. Obviously, those claims of racism, we take very seriously, and we will investigate when we have the information in front of us to the day nothing has been provided.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Westbrook? Nothing. Let's see here, is Mr. Britton here?
No.
Mr. Dumas? No. Mr. Collins? Mr. Smith? Ms. Nichols?
Just wanted to report to you that as normal, we're always looking for some way that we can benefit the citizens of our series, particularly in a way that doesn't cost us anything when we have to do it back. Several years ago, we initiated a smoke detector giveaway program whereby we've been able to either get grants or have businesses such as Home Depot, things like that, donate us smoke detectors. And we go out, firefighters go out, do some PR, install them for people. Basically, there is a few requirements. You have to be physically incapable of doing it yourself. Basically, you're at the poverty level and you just can't financially afford one, or that you have one that's broken, it just doesn't work anymore. We go out, we install it for you, we educate you on the smoke detector, make sure your house is safe while we're there. Well, we're down to the end of last grant items that we had, starting to run out. And there's a company called Kida that makes fire extinguishers and other things like that. Well, I was searching for a grant the other day, and actually, we've come across the fact that they're, they're soliciting fire departments to, to see if you would like some smoke detectors again. Anyway, I'm happy to report, I got a notice from the end of the day that they donated us 50 of them. And says that that will automatically put us in the loop for any future donations from them, which is a good start. Of course, we'd requested 200, but you take 50 and you say thank you and you move on. So we will be getting those, they said, six to eight weeks. We have a few now still left and we'll continue with the program. We've seen it to be very beneficial to the community. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Let's see here, what we've got. Ms. McCoy? All right. Supervisor, Ms. Martini? Nothing tonight. And I was going to save the best for last here, Ms. Cumberland. We have nothing. Okay. Well, we're going to adjourn to the next regular scheduled city meeting. It's scheduled on, to be held on Monday, October 27th at 7:00 PM here in the city council chambers.